Oh, Canada! Our home and native land. True patriot's love with all our sons and blood. With all our hearts we see right, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on our forty. God give our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on our forty. Oh, Canada, we stand on our forty.
Counsel, I'm going to ask if there are any disclosures of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof. I see none. Moving on to approval of the council minutes held, the special council meeting, held April 4th, 2019, which was the court of revision for the Sturgeon Creek drain, moved by Councilor Wilkinson, seconded by Councilor Jacobs, all in favor. Opposed, if any? Moving on to the public meeting, and this one is to consider the zoning bylaw amendment, ZBA 191, Mercy Road, 1739 Mercy Road 1. And that's for the temporary use zoning bylaw amendment for the same address. I will turn this over to our clerk.
Those wishing to receive written notice of council's decision to pass a bylaw related to this application must make, must request that from the clerk of the corporation, municipality of Leamington. Information on council's decision to pass a bylaw related to the application being considered this evening will be published on the municipality's website. Please note that requesting a copy of council's decision to pass a bylaw does not satisfy the requirement to maintain appeal rights to the local planning appeal tribunal or of any decision of council. A person or public body must make an oral submission at this meeting or make a written submission to the council, the corporation, municipality of Leamington before a decision is made in order to maintain appeal rights to the local planning appeal tribunal.
Thank you, Ms. Percy. We'll turn that over to Ms. Branch.
Good evening, counsel. So, the dwelling at 1739 Mercy Road 1 was damaged by fire in October of 2018. The owner is seeking approval for a temporary use zoning bylaw amendment to allow them to live in a mobile home on the property for a period of one year during the reconstruction of the dwelling. The owner is required to enter into an agreement with the municipality to ensure the appropriate level of servicing and to remove the mobile home after one year. Securities will be collected and building permits will be required to connect the mobile home to the existing hydro, water, and septic system. If the home is not removed within one year, I'm sorry, if the mobile home is not removed within one year, it will be removed by the municipality and the cost will be applied to the taxes.
Thank you, Darian. Counsel, do you have any questions of admin? Well, it's a public meeting. No questions? Is there anyone here to speak to the matter at all, applicant? So then, we do need a motion. Now, we're ready for the motion, Councilor Jacobs. Moved by Councilor Jacobs, seconded by the deputy mayor. Comments or questions? All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Darian. Moving on to the delegation for the 2018 year in review and plans for 2019, the unveiling of the official visitor guide, and we have a group of delegates plus staff. Welcome. Welcome to WEPY.
Yes, we're taking over. Good evening.
Not without a fight, you're not.
Good evening, Mayor McDonald, and of course, members of Leamington Municipal Council. My name is Gordon Orr, and I'm the chief executive officer of Tourism Windsor Essex, Pele Island. And joining me tonight is Lynette Bain, our vice president of tourism programs and development, and our director of communications, Jason Tonner, and in the audience is Chris Racine, our director of marketing. We're here tonight as part of a commitment, a commitment that was made seven years ago when we assumed the leadership roles at Tourism Windsor Essex, Pele Island. We promised we'd attend council meetings, not on a regular basis, and not only at the city and the county tables, but also at the local level, at each town council meeting. This is the seventh of nine visits we're doing. Next week, we'll appear before Essex Town Council, and then we'll conclude with LaSalle Town Council on June 11th. And we do this for a couple of reasons. First, we want to make sure that you're a little more educated and better informed on the importance of tourism as an industry and our activities designed to derive our fair share of the tourism market. And secondly, we would like to provide you an opportunity in this form to ask any questions that you may have of us. Tonight, we're here with the latest edition of our 2019-2020 visitor guide, just released, and it's before you at your place settings. And we have a brief PowerPoint presentation and video presentation highlighting our 2018 year in review and our areas of focus for 2019 and some year-over-year key performance indicators. Before we start the PowerPoint presentation, we'd like to remind counsel that tourism is a significant economic generator for this region. We receive close to 5 million visitors a year who leave close to half a billion dollars in economic activity and help support over 16,000 jobs regionally. And now, we'll start the PowerPoint. Our vision: a top-of-mind destination, offering authentic and diverse visitor experiences. Our mission: as a tourism industry collaborative committed to enhancing the region's economy and quality of life. Our mandate surrounds, centers around four key functions: marketing communications, visitor services, event attraction, and product and program development. There, you can see our organizational chart. We're a team of nine with four part-time staff as well. Our board of directors, our governance structure is there, it's an 11-member board. It's a mix of politicians and stakeholders. You can see on our executive that Mayor Santos from Kingsville is our chair, and county council is also represented by directors, deputy mayor Krista Malloch from LaSalle, and warden Gary McNamara. For 2018 year in review, we also put a document in front of you at your place settings here. Comes as no surprise to you because it was circulated to you in late February, but it's a comprehensive document we put together, working within a united visitor industry. We wanted to highlight just a few of some of the more noteworthy accomplishments found in the document, and we did so in a two-minute video, which we'd like to replay for you now. So, what happened in 2018? A year of new developments, launches, wins, and recognition. This past year, we were pretty busy. New logo, new brand campaign, and a new look for our website. All focused on our campaign, Where Can We Take You? So where did we take you? Three major conferences hosted in town with a combined number of 1,000 delegates. With large-scale events like this, the hotel economy continues to strengthen and improve. The Best of Windsor Essex Award celebrated its third year, asking the question, what's your favorite spot? The launch of the We Made It, a program designed to spotlight the makers and artisans of Windsor Essex. We joined forces with Intera Southwest and introduced the Intera Tourism Innovation Lab, a program to develop new tourism experiences, products, and partnerships, the first of its kind in Ontario. In partnership with Destination Ontario and local stakeholders, we launched Discover Canada's Southwest, a campaign that explores three of Canada's most southern waterfront communities, Kingsville, Leamington, and Pele Island. Our social media channel saw a 22% increase in social impressions and a 4% increase in social engagement. Throughout the year, we participated in 16 industry and consumer shows in eight major markets to attract people to the region. Oh, and did we mention, we walked away with a few awards, including the Culinary Leadership Award, awarded by the Culinary Tourism Alliance, the Tourism Marketing Partnership Award for our Barrels, Bottles, and Brews Trail as part of the Brewery Discovery Roots Marketing Program. And our agency of record, Tango Creative Group, won three marketing awards for our 2018 campaign, Where Can We Take You? What a year. Let's see where we can take you in 2019.
As the video highlighted, our new marketing campaign, Where Can We Take You?, you can see on the screen some of the creative concepts we have used last year and this year. Our website also incorporates the Where Can We Take You? theme, and content provided helps to answer that question for the user, whether that is assisting them with where to dine, things to do and see, or ways to get active, complete with an events calendar and events listing. A major focus of our website is suggested itineraries to help guide the user based upon key trip motivators as well as blog content with high-impact imagery. Our website is mobile-friendly, as 70% of our audience are using their phone or tablet to find out about us. In March, we hosted our fourth annual Best of Windsor Essex Awards. They were celebrations giving out 46 awards. We know that where locals like to go, so will the visitors, and this social media campaign saw a 42% increase in votes, helping us discover some of the best things in Windsor Essex. Our product development team has been busy creating and reinventing compelling product for visitors to experience while in Windsor Essex. Our latest such initiative is the We Made It program, which is designed to highlight local artisans, craftsmen, and makers of locally-made goods. For 2018 versus 2017, our hotel figures remain strong and up by about 3%, and our digital marketing efforts have also witnessed an increase in engagements of over 9%. And our open engagements in our digital databases, that's both stakeholder and marketing, is up almost 27% year-over-year, 2018 versus 2017.
We truly are one region with plenty of reasons to join us, and that regional approach to tourism continues to help capture our fair share of the tourism market. Ontario by the numbers, there you can see, it's a $34.1 billion industry, representing 4.3% of the GDP. And for every $1 million spent, 13 new jobs are created, and those 13 new jobs generate over $600,000 in wages and salaries. Tourism really does matter, and here locally, you can see that it's a job creator and economic generator.
So, what's new for 2019? You have in front of you our marketing plan and destination development strategy for 2019-2020, and our areas of focus for that plan are arts and culture, outdoor adventure, food and drink, and entertainment. Our brand-new cycle tourism map, and this is Cycle Tourism Bike Month, June, we're highlighting cycle-friendly businesses along various cycling trails and routes within our region. And our Windsor Essex fishing guide calls out to our region's species, hotspots, marinas, and events. In front of you also is our latest visitor guide. It's 88 pages this year based on demand. We print 85,000 copies and distribute them throughout Ontario, Michigan, and Ohio.
Our annual general meeting, save the date, is coming up soon, in a few weeks, actually. On June 13th, we'll be at the Canadian Historical Aircraft Association and their hangar there, and our theme is Explore and Pour from our Barrel Trail. We expect over 100 tourism partners, actually, we're at 114 currently, and we'll be having some more join us, and those stakeholders, stakeholders will be in attendance. But June is tourism month, and we're very excited to celebrate the entire month and all the good things that are happening in the industry, and we have captured a few things through our pop-up programs. We're doing a Pele Island in the City in Ford City in Windsor tomorrow, actually. We Heart Local in LaSalle, Ontario Craft Beer Week, Ontario Wine Week. We're also having media events to launch our cycle tourism map, our Barrels, Bottles, and Brews Flight Log and Video Launch, our We Heart Local map, and our new Wine Root map. And for events, we will be sponsoring at Cooper's Hog Vineyard, the Chamber of Commerce, After Business Social on June 12th. There's the team, there's the team of tourism professionals I have the privilege to work with every day. An important part of that team, of course, is our regional tourism committee, and at the start of the program, I did mention my entire leadership team, but I do recognize that Kira Knapp, your culture and tourism developer, is right with us, and she's a very important part of that team. She's been a great collaborative partner. We're very lucky to have her in this region, and you're lucky to have her in this municipality. And we've taken notice at WEPY, of course, of the increased and expanded interest and investment that this and previous councils have made into tourism. Your tourism infrastructure's improved, and so is your marketing, and that's making it easier for us to promote Leamington at a regional level. And at this time, we'd like to walk you through a few of those collaborations between our office and yours, and to do that, I'd like to ask your culture and tourism developer, Kira Knapp, to do so, please.
Hello, your worship and counsel. I thought it was important for us, on an annual basis, as Tourism Windsor Essex comes up, to talk about being our destination marketing organization, to talk about and really drill down into the partnerships that we've done with Tourism Windsor Essex over the year. So, already mentioned was Discover Canada South. So, that was, WEPY and the municipality of Leamington worked on generating a digital marketing campaign last summer and early fall alongside Kingsville and Pele Island. So, it actually had the highest engagement of any campaign that Tourism Windsor Essex has run thus far, and it was to target nearby U.S. border markets with Michigan and Ohio, specifically couples and groups of friends who were looking for an unplugged vacation encompassing communities of Leamington, Kingsville, and Pele Island. So, Leamington, Kingsville, and Pele Island videos within social ads had a total of 35,000, over 35,000 views, which is quite impressive. We also participated in a number of consumer shows through Tourism Windsor Essex, Pele Island, including the fishing show, and Tourism Windsor Essex, Pele Island came to Hogsford Hospice and helped us deliver some pretty integral visitor information surveys at Hogsford Hospice, which helped us this year determine the types of visitors that we have at our events. They also provided some pricing for us at those events. And the Cleveland Motorcycle Show was also another opportunity where we partnered, where Hogsford Hospice had the opportunity to present some of its programming as well as promote us as an event. On top of that, we have travel writers and social influencers. Last year, we had two travel media writers come in, and they write some high-profile content to promote Leamington as a region, and this year, you see that that number has over-tripled with seven media writers confirmed thus far, and we've been working very closely with a familiar face, Lindsay Gimm, and to develop some more itineraries and blogs. In fact, we have a travel media writer coming down this Sunday to experience our community. I'm happy to say that Tourism Windsor Essex, Pele Island was the first sponsor that we had for the Mill Street markets. They jumped on board within moments of us announcing it, and the beautiful tents that we have that really, I think, have done an exceptional job branding the markets were paid for in part by Tourism Windsor Essex's generous sponsorship. In addition, you'll notice in the guide that we have a full page of our Taste Leamington, a full-page ad for Taste Leamington, as well as all of our Taste Leamington restaurants have been listed in the guide as places to eat and go. And on top of that, WEPY is going to be delivering an online campaign for Taste Leamington restaurants to augment the, our community as a cultural tourism hotspot in the region. So, something that we're working on this year and that we're looking at towards the future, particularly as we've seen the success of our Mill Street markets, is the vision of Leamington, particularly the Uptown, as an arts and culture hub in the community. With the reinvention of the Uptown, the library and the bank theater, we really see some potential to look at best practices on how communities showcase their heritage and showcase their culture through art. So, we'll look at generating some enticing exhibits to create a thought-provoking vibe in the town, and we've relied heavily on WEPY to get the message out about a lot of the workshops and campaigns that we've run through that. In addition, I just did want to call out that often, when we are faced with a situation in which we are looking for guidance from people who have knowledge of the rest of the industry, maybe beyond the scope of what I do or intimate knowledge of some other communities that I might not have, I often pick up the phone and call WEPY and Ontario Southwest, our regional tourism organization, as a point of contact. For example, I've already reached out to Tourism Windsor Essex to talk about possible collaborations and partnerships with the announcement today of the closure of the Tomato and delivering visitor services and sharing some data as we address these issues as they come along. So, I did want to call out that these partnerships allow us to pick up the phone and an additional set of ears and additional industry knowledge is just a phone call away.
Great. Thank you very much, Kira. Okay, but most of all, thank you all very much. Thank you for your continuing to invest in, of course, tourism and your support of Tourism Windsor Essex, Pele Island. Your worship, at the appropriate time, we'd be willing to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gordon. Before I turn it over to the rest of counsel, I want to thank you for your collaborative work with our tourism, with Kira. I see you at so many functions, and it certainly is noted and appreciated. The fact that we're all working together means that, I believe, means that we will have a huge success. We've decided as counsel that tourism is one of our pillars, and we will work diligently towards seeing that come totally to fruition beyond just the bit it's been exposed to or been in the past. With Kira on board, as well as James, we certainly see that as an economic driver, and the fact that you're there as well, and as Kira so aptly put it, working together, it means a lot to us. We appreciate it. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilor Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You're not off the hook yet. I didn't get a chance to read them all, Gordon.
More than eight.
More than eight? Okay. Okay, we'll leave it at that. Anyway, I just want to say that Madam Mayor, I guess, sort of insinuated what I was, wanted to say, the cool working relationship with Kira, and I think you guys are doing a fantastic job, and really appreciate it, what we're doing forward here. Anyway, you're not off the hook yet, as I said, I got to go through this, but anyway. Thank you. Yeah, oh, you're on. Thanks, Gordon. Lynette, thank you very much.
But the compliment is duly noted.
I did compliment, yes.
With that, Councilor Wilkinson.
Thank you, and thank you, WEPY, for coming tonight. Yes, I'm glad that you took notice of the improvements we're making and the emphasis we put on arts and culture ourselves around town. We're putting our skin in the game by investing in the library, the bank theater course, and there's other improvements still to come. My question to you is, you know, you look at the region as a, as a whole. If you were to see any opportunities or shortcomings or challenges that we maybe have that we could improve on, what's, what's WEPY's thoughts on that? Where could we be improving, or what opportunities are we missing out on?
Thank you, your worship, through you to the counselor, and I'll start, and then I'll ask Lynette to jump in if she could. I think some of them are being addressed, actually, and this, again, counsel's being very proactive in it. Regional transportation was always an issue, and I think now that you've started that relationship and see how that traffic goes, and perhaps that can be expanded upon, that's wonderful. I know that it recognizes that we can get people that are students or workers to the city and back and forth, but we also recognize the fact that visitors, that's a very important market for us. And I know that we've been working on some regional signage as well, wayfinding signage to have people help navigate through from, right from Windsor, right out to Leamington. So, those are two that come to mind right off the top of my head. Lynette, do you have any more?
Well, some of the things that Kira and I have discussed over maybe the past couple of years have revolved around market readiness training and engaging small business. So, that's definitely an area that we'll have to continue to improve in engaging the BIA and making sure that we're able to offer support and resources to help educate and train the businesses. And I think the Taste Leamington is a really great step towards engaging a group that hadn't been engaged before in tourism and not even know they were in the tourism business. So, I think that's phenomenal, and continuing to help retail business or restaurants or even non-retail, like what you've done with the woodworking company, to make them understand that they can be in the tourism business. So, that's really important. And then, on the development side, continue to develop relationships with the national park and as well through indigenous tourism opportunities. I think that's an area that we could work together on and seeing, because I think there's definitely some opportunity there, and that's where government is taking notice too, so the potential for funds in the future to really tap into the developing some indigenous tourism.
Counselor Hammond.
Your worship, thank you. In looking through the visitor's guide, it's very impressive, and I thank you for, you know, once again, attending this year. You know, on a local front, we're excited about tourism. We understand the need for that, hence our acquisitions, you know, of lakefront properties and all of those things that we've done. And we really had a great success with, with your help and input for the first Mill Street Market. It was, it was great. But on a very exciting note, and Kira touched on our bank theater, last night I attended the Bank Theater annual general meeting. The AGM was last night. They're hoping to, they're hoping to be up and running on Labor Day. They've got some great acts planned. They're going to invite all of council, by the way, for the first night, and they've got some great acts planned. I'm sure Kira is a part of all of that, and we hope that we can really see a lot of support again from WEPY next year with respect to the Bank Theater and, of course, our library too, which is, is coming. So, thank you again for attending.
Thank you very much, counselor, and your worship, if I may, if you'll beg my indulgence. I would like to mention that within 30 days, maybe 45 days, of Mayor McDonald being elected, she and your CAO came out and visited with Lynette and I in our offices to open up dialogue and conversation, and that has not happened before, and we very much appreciated that. That's leadership, and we look forward to further partnerships with you.
Great. Well, thank you then for coming and bringing us up to speed as to what you've done and what you plan to do, and we look forward to working together in the future. So, let's have a great year. Lots of things on the go. Every weekend, there's something on the go, so I'm sure we'll see you around. Thank, thank all of you for coming. So, we're moving on to... We have Reinvent This Space next on the, that's why I stopped for a minute. Danielle.
Thank you, your worship, and members of counsel. So, the purpose of my presentation tonight is to update counsel on the current status and plans for the Reinvent This Space program, and also to seek counsel's authorization to administer this program through the business relocation stream of the Community Improvement Plan Grant Program, and I'll get into the reasons for this in my report. So, as I believe counsel's aware, Reinvent This Space is an economic development program that's been implemented in a number of communities across Ontario, and the details of the program vary from community to community, but generally speaking, what it involves is it's a way to promote local entrepreneurship and help reduce vacancies in downtown areas, and it's been implemented fairly successfully in a number of communities across the province. So, details vary from community to community, but generally speaking, what happens is a municipality in partnership with, with different community partners invites potential entrepreneurs, people who may have a business idea, to submit that business idea, and then the short list of finalists who have the strongest, most viable business ideas have received some in-depth training and mentoring on all aspects of operating a business ranging from business plan development to financing, marketing, all aspects that an entrepreneur needs to be successful at running a business. In the end, the people that participate in this program make a pitch to a panel of judges about their business idea and the, the other ideas that they've developed during this process, and then the winner of the competition receives a grant equivalent to 12 months of rent at a space in, at a vacant space in a downtown area. So, counsel has indicated a desire to see a program like this implemented in Leamington, and they allocated some funds towards it in the 2019 budget. So, we've been working on developing this and developing what our local variant of this program would look like in the time since then. So, the Leamington version of this program has been tentatively titled Reinvent This Space, done so in order to encourage applicants to think of new and different and innovative ways to help reinvent some of the vacant spaces that we've got in the Uptown area right now. So, what we found when we've been looking at the different programs that have been implemented throughout Ontario is that the ones that are the most successful tend to be the ones that are very firmly based in the community, that are, that are developed in partnership with the community, and that are tailored in order to fit the needs of the local community and the particular economic challenges and the economic makeup of every the local community and the particular economic challenges and the economic makeup of every community. So to this end, the report tonight is recommending the formation of a working group of local business leaders, which will be led by the mayor, to oversee the Reinvent This Space program, make the major decisions regarding program design and implementation, and generally help provide the guidance that's needed to tailor this type of program to the particular conditions that we've got in Leamington right now. So the potential members of the working group will be recruited from our business leaders, and we really want to place an emphasis on getting a good mix of experience and expertise so that we can help provide the mentoring to potential applicants to this program. So again, this will involve things like finance, accounting, marketing, business plan development, skills development, done in partnership with the municipality and the supports that we can offer through the Economic Development Office. So in my report, I have a tentative timeframe for the implementation of this program, and obviously, this is subject to change based on the recommendations of the working group that's established. But we're hoping to begin promoting and taking applications to this program in July of this year, run the program through the summer months, engage the applicants in the mentoring and training throughout the end of the summer and the fall, with the aim of finalizing the program and awarding the grant in October or November of this year, with the aim of having, having the successful applicant open up their business in the spring of 2020. And the reason that we've opted for this longer timeframe is it allows us to give support to the successful entrepreneur even after the program ends, recognizing that there may need to be improvements done on the inside of the space, that they wind up renting the downtown and allowing us to work with them through our Community Improvement Plan and, and provide them additional support throughout, throughout this. We want the entrepreneurs that participate in this program to open successful, sustainable businesses. And so it's not just going to be a one-time program. There's a sustained commitment that we're going to continue to work with them to help them develop their skills and support them throughout this process. So the other recommendation of my report is that the grant for this, or that this program be administered through the Business Relocation Stream of our Community Improvement Plan. As, as council is aware, municipalities cannot generally provide bonusing to businesses. We can't provide financial support for particular businesses looking to open or operate within our community, except under the provisions of the community, of a Community Improvement Plan, which we do have in effect in uptown Leamington. We're fortunate that we have a, that one of the streams of the program is, allows us to offer grants for businesses that are looking to relocate or open in the uptown. It's not been, it's not been a stream that has been well utilized in the past, but it is there. And so it's a recommendation of this report that we administer the grant through the, for the Reinvent This Space program as a Community Improvement Plan grant. The details for that are included in my report. That basically sums up the, the high-level overview that I'd like you to provide tonight. My, the intention, of course, is to keep council apprised as the program is developed and implemented and more details are finalized. But at this point, I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have about the report.
Thank you, James. I start with Councilor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Your Worship. James, I wish you the best of luck with this. I sincerely do. Please knock this one out of the park. I think it's a great idea. When I first heard about this, I think it was two years ago now, when we heard about this at an AMO concert, we listened to that Jane... Polly. I thought it was a fantastic idea when I first heard it, and so many other municipalities seemed to get excited by it. She was really on to something. You could tell it, and it came through in her presentation. What I hope for, I'm gonna throw a scenario to you, and I hope that this is what happens, you know. I'm hoping that we've got a bunch of applicants, fantastic proposals that come to us, where you've got a really tough decision to make. Let's say you've got three or four fantastic ideas that we really need in this town. It's what's missing, but unfortunately, we're only gonna award the top prize to the top person. What would we be doing with the unsuccessful applicants? I would hate to see them, you know, just, especially after they've gone to all the work too, involved to try and get there, that they're left empty-handed. Is there anything that we can offer? Because I remember Jane talking about that. It opened up kind of basement or garage-type entrepreneurs, you know. They came up with these fantastic ideas, and it'd be a shame to lose that. So it's something that I want you to keep in mind. Maybe you've already thought of it, but maybe it'd be something that you discussed with the group. But definitely, best of luck to both you and Mayor McDonald. I know you got a busy schedule taking on this. Looks like no easy task. I commend you for doing it. Thank you.
I have Councilor Jacobs next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A great program. I think you're doing well. Just out of curiosity, is there any inquiries to date to the program? No, it's not out publicly yet or whatever, but are you receiving any type of interest as, as of date on this?
Through you, Your Worship. What we've been doing is, I have not received any specific inquiries about it as of yet, but having said that, we haven't finalized the program or really started promoting it beyond the discussions that happened at the council table. But I do receive through sort of the general activities of the Economic Development Office. I often receive calls from people who are looking to start a business, and oftentimes, they're very early on in the process. They're entrepreneurs that have an idea. And so I, we, I have been flagging that this is a program that's coming up to all of the inquiries that I receive through sort of the general business that we do. So people are aware of it, and our, our plan is certainly to promote this quite heavily once the, once the program is up and running in the summer months. And speaking to Councilor Wilkinson's point, it absolutely, it is our intent to sustain an engagement with all of the entrepreneurs that want to participate in this program. The example from the municipality of Huron East, which was sort of the forerunner and the leader in, in starting this program, they had, I believe, 10 applicants that went through the mentoring process. And I believe six of them wound up opening their businesses in the long run. So even the mentoring process will help them create a sustainable business. And once they've gone to the work of developing a business plan, we certainly intend to support them and make sure that they locate in Leamington.
Just to give a bit of an answer to Councilor Jacobs, James and I sat down and put together the list of committee members, professional committee members, and each one that I asked was more than thrilled to be invited, thought it was a fantastic idea. So they're all in a position of leadership within, within their profession and are willing to donate time and mentoring time as well. So to get that kind of response at that level has been very encouraging. I haven't really told anyone at all, waiting to get it ready to be rolled out. So it will be great when it hits the paper and becomes public.
Fantastic program. And like what Councilor Wilkinson was saying, I would hate to see the ones that aren't successful fall by the wayside. And I think, hopefully, we can expand this program, you know, get some of these storefronts filled, and work something out with the current owners or, you know, reduce leases or whatever. But I think it's fantastic, and James, a great job, and yourself as well, Madam Mayor, taking this on. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilor Tisa next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I believe you actually just answered my question in your response to Councilor Jacobs. I think this is a great program as well. I, we were at a meeting back, I believe it was January or maybe even December, and it was, I really liked the presentation. I think there's some great merits to this whole program. So my, you know, my question was about the mentoring, whether you actually had a working group together yet and how, how that would work. But they will be donating their time, which is, which is great. I'm really glad to hear that. Also, do you have any spaces that you have in mind, or have you picked out spaces already that would be part of this program to be reinvented?
Through you, Your Worship. We don't have spaces in mind as of yet. That is one of the decisions that we'll be asking the working group to, to take on. The programs that have been done in other communities have done it differently, either opening it up to any space that's available in the uptown, or working with a few, with a short list of spaces that are ready to go or that are our primes. So that's a decision that we'd be asking the, the working group to take on.
All of council might not have known this, but Jan Holly came to a chamber function in December and talked about this project. So we've already, through the chamber, have already planted some seeds, I'm sure. So there will be people familiar with it. So that's always good. And I wanted to say too, the mentors will get advertising for their firms or their organizations. So, so they do get something out of it as well. Some we, we approached because we know they wanted to get a bigger footprint in the community. So this hopefully will help them as well. So we, we tried to make some good choices. I think we made great choices, actually. And they all said yes. We didn't even have a, like a B-list. We're hoping for all of A, and they said yes. So it'll, it will behoove them as well professionally, and I believe personally too, always to mentor. Someone else is a, is a great and rewarding relationship. I do have Councilor Dunn next. Sorry, Councilor Hammond.
Through you, Madam Mayor. This does excite me. I remember seeing the program with, with yourself, Madam Mayor. My only question is, I really like the idea of the mentoring, but what if you have a huge turnout? I remember they talked about putting a course on for, putting a business plan together and that kind of thing, because in case you have so many people that you don't have enough mentors for, and putting on that so that more of them could get their business plan put together.
Through you, Your Worship. It is certainly our hope that we get lots of applicants to this program. And I have been working with the Small Business Centre of Windsor Essex to arrange for there to be business plan development workshops and other skills development workshops offered in Leamington throughout the summer months. If we have more applicants that are able to engage in the more detailed mentoring that is proposed by this program, we will absolutely make sure that anyone who wants to start a business is, is able to take advantage of the full range of business supports that we have in the area.
Councilor Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor. We've kind of touched on the question that I was going to ask, and that is, are we limited to just uptown storefronts or businesses? Or is this something that might, might be offered to somewhere throughout the whole municipality? I mean, with respect to a business?
Through you, Your Worship. These programs have traditionally been done in downtown areas specifically with, with the, looking at the question of vacancies, because that tends to be where you see the highest vacancy rate in, certainly in comparator communities to Leamington. I think the, the focus of this program, again, is very tightly on the, on the uptown area. But if this is something that is successful and we want to expand it in the future, I think that's absolutely something that can be looked at.
And further to that, the Reinvent is the, the label we're giving to the Corps for the, for the time being. So that seemed to work hand in hand with it. If there are no further questions, thank you, James. I would entertain a motion moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Councilor Wilkinson. Comments or questions? All in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you, James.
Thank you very much.
And now we're moving on to the combined consent and zoning bylaw amendment, ZBA 168. The application is for 2420 Hickson Road, as well as 417 and 419 Kent Road 1. And Danielle, that is you now.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald, members of council. So we had a public meeting on May 14th for the consideration of a consent and zoning amendment application that would allow for a lot addition to expand the property and the current zoning of the existing Taylor-Fish operation at 419 Kent Road 1. As part of that application, council was provided with planning report PLA 0319, a planning justification report prepared by the applicant's planning consultant in support of the applications, as well as written comments from the County of Essex and Urka with no concerns. No comments were received in writing or at the public meeting from area residents. Administration did receive questions and comments from council regarding the existing drainage and parking on site, and it was noted that these items can be specifically addressed as part of the pending site plan agreement. Consent Application B1018 looks to add lands from the farm at 2420 Hickson Road, and it can be supported as it is consistent with the PPS as it relates to the use or removal of prime egg land from an exist, or for an existing non-agricultural use. It also conforms to the land division and land use policies of both the county OP and Leamington OP. The provisions of approval for the lot addition can be supported subject to the standard conditions. They are listed as Schedule A to the report. I do want to note that there was a typo in the date that was listed in Schedule A. As per the planning act, the application or the applicant will have one year from the mailing of the notice of the decision to complete the conditions, and that would be 2020, not 2019 as a typo. The accompanying amending bylaw was prepared as recommended by administration and will allow for the following zone changes. The retained farm at 2420 Hickson Road will be site specifically zoned A10, or A2-10 to recognize the slightly undersized area. The severed parcel added to 419 Kent Road 1 will be rezoned from A2 to A2-11 to match the zoning of the Taylor Fish Company. The residential lot at 417 Kent Road 1 will be rezoned from A5 to A2-11. And the existing Taylor Fish Company will be rezoned from A5-29 to A2-11. The newly established A2-11 zone will maintain all of the provisions of the A5-29 zone, including the fish processing, storing, and retail uses. It will allow agricultural uses, and it will eliminate the permitted residential use on this property. As noted, the development of the consolidated properties is subject to site plan control. The applicant has submitted site plan application 0918, as well as the required plans, drawings, and reports, and will be in a position to finalize the application upon the approval of these applications and the passing of the appeal period. With that, the recommendation before council this evening is to grant provisional consent to Consent Application B1018 for the lot addition, subject to the conditions provided, and to prove, to approve the requested zoning bylaw amendment as recommended and brought forward as bylaw 3319.
Thank you, Danielle. Did council have any questions for administration? Councilor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Your Worship. My only question's in regards to a date that's on page...
You didn't hear that?
I'm sorry.
You didn't hear Ms. Truax? She corrected it.
Sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. Did Ms., Ms. Last Lean or the highest, would you like to speak, come up and present at all? No? Okay, that's good. I didn't mean to embarrass you, but I thought rather than taking up your time, I would... Yes, I know that. I saw it. Moved by Councilor Jacobs, seconded by Councilor, oh, sorry. Oh.
Daley John, one.
Moved by Councilor Hammond, the very young Councilor Hammond, seconded by Councilor Dunn, all in favor. And that's Carrie. Thank you.
Yep.
Best of luck. So Danielle, we are now moving on to the relief from the greenhouse setback regulations.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. The Development Support Committee has, over the past two years, been reviewing several large expansions to existing greenhouses. We're also looking at numerous new greenhouse developments. And in doing so, we've recognized that there is an opportunity to streamline the review process, increase the protection for existing residential uses in the ag area, and to continue to maintain appropriate development standards for greenhouses. In particular, administration feels that by revisiting a resolution passed in 2010 by council, which was established to provide direction to administration and the Committee of Adjustment, when greenhouse developments were seeking relief from the required setbacks of the zoning bylaw, it will be possible to remove steps in the review process and establish clear zoning regulations for greenhouse and property owners in the ag area. Council passed Resolution C152-10, which listed five factors which were, were to be taken into consideration for minor variance applications, which were seeking reductions to the required setbacks for greenhouses. In summary, the factors that, the factors were that greenhouses had to establish their hardship for having to comply with the required 50-foot setback, but that they could apply for a reduction even up to zero if the abutting properties were held in the same or different ownership and were subject to a common site plan, that greenhouses couldn't be built closer than 50 feet to a residential property or an A5 zone, but that there may be special consideration for existing greenhouses that didn't comply currently. Additionally, greenhouses shouldn't be built closer than 50 or 70 feet to a dwelling that was...
Additionally, greenhouses shouldn't be built closer than 70 feet to a dwelling that wasn't in an A 5 or residential zone. And finally, if a greenhouse sought relief to allow a setback closer than 25 feet to a property line, a zoning amendment application before council would be required. Following this resolution coming forward, there were several minor variance applications for exactly 25 feet. However, we really haven't had any zoning amendments to seek less than that submitted for council's consideration. As council is aware, a minor variance is a very useful tool to allow for development that doesn't meet the required provisions exactly, but meets the intent. Minor variances are to be considered only on the four tests established under the Planning Act, and this is supported by volumes of case law. The four tests include, will the relief result in desirable or appropriate development? Will the relief allow for development that meets the intent of the OP and the zoning bylaw? And is the variance considered minor in nature, which is often interpreted as minor in impact? What the 2010 resolution does is create an additional regulation to be applied as if they were part of the zoning bylaw, as well as additional tests under the Planning Act. As such, a council or committee decision based on the additional factors of the resolution would be difficult to defend or support if appealed to the local planning appeal tribunal or what was formerly the OMB. When several minor variances are brought forward for the same regulation repeatedly, it may be an indication that the regulation does not suit the type of development it is being applied against. In the case of greenhouse development, administration maintains that the current 50-foot setback continues to be appropriate, given the changing nature and increased intensity of the types of operations being established in Leamington. With that being said, a minor variance is a relatively simple process to use to ensure that any necessary variances, no matter what the setback requested, remains to be appropriate. In reviewing the factors, administration feels, though that the intent was clearly to establish and maintain setbacks which were appropriate for both greenhouses and other properties in the ag area, the exact application of each of those factors is problematic. Minor variances should be used to consider setback relief, most notably for interior, side yard or rear yard setbacks in the agricultural area. An application should be reviewed based on the merit of each application and the four tests. Consideration of each application will allow for decisions which reflect both the current built form of greenhouses and ensure orderly development over the long term. As noted within the report, the one factor that is missed under the current regulations of the zoning bylaw is a greater setback for greenhouse development from existing residential properties and uses in the agricultural area. In order to maintain the intent of the resolution, council should consider amending zoning bylaw 89009 to require increased setbacks from residential lot lines and existing dwellings. In efforts to remove unnecessary steps in the development process and offer greater protection to existing uses in the ag area, the recommendation before council this evening is that applications to vary the required setbacks for greenhouse structures in the A 1, A 2, A 3 zone be considered in accordance with the four tests as set out under Section 451 of the Planning Act and not in consideration of council resolution C 15210. And a municipally initiated zoning bylaw amendment be undertaken to amend the greenhouse zone provisions again in the A 1, A 2 and A 3 zones.
Thank you. Counselor. Questions? Counselor Teason.
Has the stakeholders in the greenhouse industry been apprised of this or do they know what we're talking about here? Are they asking for a reduction? Is this coming forward just because of the number of times it's come before the Committee of Adjustment? I'm still of the opinion, I think it should maybe stay with the Committee of Adjustment because I think each individual case can be different. And I still think maybe that's the place for it. But if the stakeholders feel different, I'd like to hear why they feel it should be down to 25.
So we're suggesting that the setback should maintain as 50 feet and that, yes, any reduction should be considered by the Committee of Adjustment, no matter what you're looking for. The report has come about, so we've had this under consideration for quite a while. We do see these quite often with the amount of development that's going on and the types of farms that are being consolidated. We currently do have one application before us where they've challenged this resolution. They would like to proceed as a minor variance. Staff is in support of proceeding as a minor variance. We feel that, given the nature of that greenhouse development, it would meet the four tests. However, we have to have, we acknowledge the resolution of the council resolution.
Does that answer your question?
I guess I'm, is it just the one application now that has brought this forward or have there been more? Are the stakeholders asking for this, I guess? And have they been, has there been a survey down of them or do you need a meeting with some of the stakeholders to get to that answer?
So we have had several minor variances in the past. We do have one right now before us that doesn't meet the council resolution. If we were to move forward with the recommendation, we would initiate that process. So fortunately, the greenhouse sector is probably one of our most involved stakeholders. So when we do reach out to them, they do contribute to that. So our boarding house study was one where they came out and participated quite a bit. So we haven't started that with them, aside from the one that's currently in process. But the recommendation would like to move that forward to seek their input.
If I could just inject myself here, the problem with the boarding house thing though was that we came out with the rules and regulations and then we got lots of uproar and we had to change our mind. So my only, my concern where I believe I agree with Counselor Teason is that should we not have the consultation before we implement the changes? And I'm not trying to be critical. You know what it is for us, Danielle, is when we change our minds publicly, it gets to be that we're not fully considering our options at the original point of time. So that's my reason for asking that, because if we get pushback in the next month and a half, will we be back here wanting to adjust or change our minds? So that's my reason. Would it not be better to ask for the input ahead of time before council moves this forward?
So under the Planning Act, we can actually do that formally through a public open house. So put out there, explain what the rules that are currently in place, explain what we're seeking input on, develop those policies and then come back to say, this is what we heard, this is how it can be implemented through a bylaw. So we have that tool available to us to go out to the stakeholders first and then draft up any changes or additions to the current A 1, A 2, A 3 zoning regulations.
Further to that though, would then change though your recommendation for this evening, would it not?
So the public open house is part of a municipally initiated zoning bylaw amendment. It's sort of the first step. It's not a regulated step, but it's a step that's offered under the Planning Act.
Okay, but we're not changing the, we're not, I just wanted to read what the recommendation was. See, I took the recommendation as that we were going to change the process and then have a public information?
So I think the first part of the resolution is really just providing direction to say, play by the current rules. And then there was a new set of rules, not a new set of rules, the direction provided under the resolution. So that's where it gets kind of sticky for administration to apply those rules. So if you look at the lists in the report, the only thing that we wouldn't be doing, two things. We wouldn't be applying a 70-foot setback to any existing residential dwelling. We can't do that now. We don't do that now because it's not a requirement when there's really a severance is the only time it would come up. And the second thing would be, instead of bringing a reduction for less than 25 feet to council, it would continue to go to, it would go to the Committee of Adjustment. So that is the change right now. Feel it's more appropriate. And then we would start a public consultation process to put in, if what they want is greater protection or lesser setbacks, we would start that process to consult with them.
Okay. Thank you. I have the Deputy Mayor next.
Thank you, Mayor, for asking that question. I just want to know what did drive this and I think I got my answer. I guess if we're going to have a hard, fast 50-foot, are we going to have at least a hard, fast minimum? If I decide to come in now and if I'm not an abutting landowner, if I'm backing on another farm, some of the equipment needs to have enough room to get in to maintain it. Are we going to just stick with 25 or can there be like a 15 come in? Because there are a couple out there now and then it's forcing people to sell because they can't enjoy their yard on County Road 31. So they have to take down basically a fence for them to come in to put new plastic on. So I guess nothing, but I wanted to make sure that we don't rewrite it again, that we have the input. I don't know what drove it. And do we have a hard minimum? Or can we talk about that then at that time too then? But just, no, I'm okay with it, but I just want to know, this is for all greenhouses? No matter what's growing in them?
So maybe I can start with, so yes, in the report, we do note that administration is in support of the current 50-foot setback and looking at each situation as it comes forward for any reduction, whether it be five feet, down to zero feet because of abutting properties, that would be the scenario. So we currently support the 50. We don't anticipate that that is something we're looking to change. That was the first question. The second part of the question, sorry, could you repeat it? That we're looking to maintain the 50-foot minimum. It's just when people come in, instead of going to council...
I would say that's the maximum, maximum minimum. That's the farthest you can stay away is 50 feet. And you know, just doing your calculation, that could be up to two acres that people have lost. What's the debt? Are we going to have a 25 minimum? Like, don't even bother coming into town if you're not an abutting landowner for 25 feet, if you want 20 feet. Because that's created problems down the road too. So I guess, and is it administrations? Is it planning? I know you guys are swamped there too, or you just, everything automatically should go to Committee of Adjustments or something, I believe, too.
So I think what we're saying is that the minimum setback always be 50, but if you're coming in for a reduction, we will look at what that reduction is based on the scenario. So if someone were coming in for a five and the neighbor had concerns, that's part of the minor variance process. But we're looking at maintaining a required setback of 50. Any reduction, we feel should go to the Committee of Adjustment and be based on the four tests. And then the second part of that question was with respect to the types of greenhouse or what's grown in the greenhouse. So from a planning perspective, we don't who zone. So we also don't zone based on what's grown in the greenhouse. So that's a standard setback for all greenhouse structures.
Thank you, Danielle. I have you next, Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Has there been any revisions in neighboring communities as far as setback goes recently? My understanding is, or I thought that maybe there had been a reduction prior to us implementing? We went up and they went down type thing? Is that, are you aware of that at all?
I'm not aware of that, but that's part of what we can do is in the review of the regulations, we often look to what similar municipalities or municipalities with similar development, greenhouse development, what their standards are as a best practice. So we can look into that.
It just came to my attention last week there in some discussions that a neighboring community went the opposite to what we were doing. So maybe if you could check into that. And I also like the idea of input from the stakeholders in this. I think that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
I have Counselor Hammond.
Your worship, thank you again. You know, I think that we all know that when they're constructing these greenhouses, they want to cover every inch that they can. And keeping in mind that we, I mean, that 50-foot was put there for a reason. I'm unsure of what that reason is, but there had to be a good, sound reason for it to be there to begin with. So my thought is that, you know, if we get input from the stakeholders, meaning the greenhouse growers, and they might want to raise some concerns that I guess we're not thinking about, but I think at the very least, you know, and I think it should come before Committee of Adjustment. I was kind of opposed to that earlier on, but I believe that we should have a minimum. You call it a maximum or a minimum, and I'll use 25 feet. So if they want to come in for something from 50 to 25 and ask for the reasons, that so be it through Committee of Adjustment. But anything less than that should not happen because 25 feet, and I'm thinking now of not them being able to maintain the greenhouses and setbacks from other property lines, I'm thinking about fire trucks that need to get in and out of there because that's one of the reasons why those are all looked at all the time. And I think when we do that, we need to have the fire department here for this open forum so they can say, no, 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 we need that space. I mean, we all know the fire trucks are getting bigger now. And I think that if we're going to look at something less than 50, so be it, but I don't think it should, I don't even think it should come before Committee of Adjustment for less than 25.